Kia ora koutou katu. Welcome to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council's Community and Culture Committee. We have on the agenda a presentation to the public forum that has not eventuated, it's dissipated somewhat in the interest of efficiency. So we'll move to apologies. We have apologies from the mayor and councillor Staines and no longer from councillor Newell for lateness. I'll move that those apologies be sustained, seconded councillor Wilson. All those in favour, those against, that's agreed. Confirmation of the agenda, I'll move that the committee confirm the agenda with the following alteration with regard to standing order 2.1, option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments, seconded councillor Alder. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, that's agreed. Declarations of interest, any amendments that people want to make at this point? No? In that case, I'll move that the committee note the elected members' interest register and confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interests, seconded councillor Lawfesel. All those in favour? Those against, that's agreed. Part A reports, Dr Griffin, welcome. Otago Museum report to contributing local authorities, April 2019.
And while I let you catch your breath, might I offer, in this public forum, our formal congratulations to you and your staff for your recent successes at the museum awards, picking up the most innovative education programme and most innovative public programme and the Arts Access Aotearoa Awards for your work.
Thank you very much.
So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I will hand things over to you.
Okay. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to come and report on what we've been doing at the museum over the last few months. A couple of things that aren't in this report but I would like to draw your attention to. Firstly, we did win three awards at the museum's Aotearoa conference this year and it was great to see the art gallery won one too at that as well, so Dunedin was really represented. We were out in force. The other thing that's happened subsequent to this report is that the museum's announced that we're hosting the James Cameron Challenging the Deep exhibition, which will open on the 20th of July. This is a big deal for us, it's the only venue in New Zealand to host this exhibition. We're the second exhibition in the world and it's an exhibition about James Cameron's interest in exploration of the deep ocean. So it contains lots of props from his movies like Titanic and the deep, sorry, the abyss. But it's also about exploration and we've managed to attract significant partnership funding from the Otago Community Trust and Niwa, who will be bringing, I understand, their research vessel to Dunedin as part of the celebrations. So we're very excited about that, we think it's going to be great for Dunedin and the exhibition's going to run for just over six months and we're very excited about the fact that the DCC have come to the party and are helping us make it a sort of a citywide event. So I'd like to say thank you to everybody who's been involved in that, it is a coup. I won't speak too much detail of this report, it's there, but during the period that ended, summarising this report, we did close our EST exhibition which had well over 50,000 visitors, which is quite exciting. We opened a new planetarium show called Zelandia in partnership with Natural History New Zealand and that celebrates this amazing discovery of the continent of Zelandia and we featured the wildlife and that planetarium show has been very successful. We've also done a hell of a lot of outreach and the museum's outreach programme is mostly funded through MBIE funds and in the period covered by this report, nearly 4,000 school kids got to experience some of our science engagement activities. There's lots going on and in finishing, I'd like to record our thanks to the council for the increase in funding for the museum next year. That's really important for us after a period of relatively flat funding, but we had an increase this year and we do appreciate that because without the support of the council we couldn't do any of the work that we do. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the report itself. Thank you. Questions? Councillor Gary?
Thank you. Mr Griffin, congratulations again and on page 28, talking about the visitor experience and science engagement, it talks about the staff having noted more cruise ship passengers visiting the centre this year than previously. Can you tell us why? What has been the difference in terms of why you've got an increase there?
I think there's been a very, there's a dramatic increase in signage around the city. I mean, the museum is not, we know the museum is relatively walkable from the octagon, but it's easier for people to kind of go from the octagon down to Toito and I think there is better signage now, so we're getting more people that way. But also I think there's more of the cruise ship passengers doing their own thing, they're not necessarily going on the organised tours and I think that's something we're seeing. So people have Googled what's going on in Dunedin and they've decided to come up under their own steam rather than getting on a minibus or something. So we're very excited about seeing more and we'd like to see more and more people through and we're very hopeful that with the, especially the Cameron exhibition, we'll have a package that some of the cruise ship folks will want to come along and see, although as someone pointed out the other day, perhaps seeing something about Titanic if you're on a cruise ship isn't necessarily the most stimulating thing. But that aside, we think that the city itself has got itself, dare I say, a bit better organised with regard to the cruise ship folks. Councillor Newell?
Thank you Chair. Congratulations Ian, it seems to be a regular occurrence you coming here and we're congratulating you on more awards or coups that you're doing, so keep picking goals mate. Just one question regarding the hock and repair of the roof, how substantial is that and is it a sign of things to come?
Yep, as we indicate, the hock and roof does need repair and because it's a heritage building, we're being invited at least to kind of keep the repairs in keeping with its heritage status and that adds up a significant amount of money, about over a million dollars I think is the number that we quote. Over the next 10 years, the museum needs to renovate all of our galleries and all of our fabric and that's going to be a massive project. We're developing a master plan and that master plan will put it all into a sensible development sequence, but we estimate that's going to be 30 to 50 million dollars. We know that we've got to get external funding for that, but the museum itself, the estate, you know, some of our oldest building dates from 1877, there's lots of things that need to be upgraded and I do think it is the start of a period of significant capital investment in the museum. But we're very conscious of the fact that we can't just rely on DCC for that, we've got to go out to get government funding and national funding because that's a really big project. But we're confident that if we get the master plan right, we will get that funding. Thank you. Councillor Law?
Thanks Ian. Hey, look, just one of the things, it's just a wee silly thing, but I've just noticed on the new acquisitions, and I assume not all acquisitions you buy, so you get them from a variety of sources. I see you've got a silver denari there, are they a particularly rare thing because I've seen them?
Hang on, which page is this, sorry?
Page 20.
Oh, page 20, right. You're asking the wrong person about whether it's rare or not because I'm an astronomer, not an expert in storage. But I know for a fact that the collections team have got very strict processes because one of the big problems we have in museums is storage, so we don't want to just keep getting lots and lots of stuff. So we do have collections priorities. As to its rareness, I can't actually speak to that, but I know that it was something that the collection team wanted and that's why we acquired it.
Yeah, okay, so, yep. I just do know they're quite common, but also quite rare and special, but yeah. The other question I just had, you related into your government funding, but I know perhaps early last year there was talk about the government thinking about Te Papa of the South and recognising that Otago might have been a good place to put some government funding into that. Have you had any more conversations with anyone about that or is it?
Not directly, we've had, we wrote to, with the support of David Clarke actually, we wrote to Grant Robertson to seek a pot of money that the museum could apply for for national funding projects, but we kind of got knocked back, the letter came back and said, well actually, you know, we're not convinced there's a need for this yet. So I think there's a lot of strategic thinking we need to do.
Didn't the Prime Minister even say that was an option when she was here at one point?
I'm not aware of that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not aware of that.
No, okay, thank you.
Councillor Alder?
Thank you Chair. Just a question, you do amazing education programmes along with the art gallery and the Toito Museum and I was just wondering, do you guys get together every now and then and share stories and?
Yeah, there's a lot of contact between the different programmes and actually all of the programmes in Dunedin are complementary. Our early OTC funding covers, I think it's social science if I get it right, Orakanui have got a science one, I think the art gallery have got an art one and Toito have got one too and I can't remember if it's social history or not. So we all complement each other, we're not competing and the teams do work very hard to make sure that they are kind of providing a joined up service across the city for all of the schools. But outside of that, as I say, we've developed quite a lot of expertise in the science engagement purely because of the funding that we've managed to attract and that gives us, we're now doing national outreach in science engagement, so it's quite nice to be working in that space.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary?
Dr Griffin, I see that the engagement with the Pacifica community was very successful on a special open day. Can I ask what prompted that and are you doing other things like that?
Well, it was prompted by an approach from the community itself and we decided that absolutely we need to be able to serve the whole community and we held a day with leaders from that community and we got some feedback which has been very helpful and we're putting together a plan to try and do more in that space. I mean, the key thing that we'd really like to do at the museum, for example, we've got one of the best collections of Pacific material in any museum in the southern hemisphere and yet we don't have a curator Pacifica simply because we don't have enough money for that. So one of the areas, if we could expand our team by a little tiny bit, we would look to appoint a curator Pacifica who could really go out and work, not just with the material that we've got in the collection, but with the community. And one of the big successes I think in the last four or five years that I've been, I'm not going to take responsibility for it, happened in my time. We appointed a curator Maori and Rachel Wesley especially now is doing fabulous work, not just looking after the collection and developing our Tangatafenua Gallery, but the work that she does with the community is really red hot and I think that's the key to success in this area is appoint people with specialism that can work with those communities. But I'm very conscious of the fact that there's a lot more we've got to do, but most of the challenge we have there is due to resourcing.
Thank you and that visibility in the community is noted.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing? I forgot to mention, one other thing that happened since we last met was the certain Maua footprints that we recovered from Kaiburn, which was a big deal. I don't know if you know the story of that, but we were contacted by Farmer on Facebook and said, look, I found these footprints. One of our staff went up to Kaiburn, dived under the stream, saw that they were Maua footprints and the museum put together a team with the University of Otago and we extracted them. Now diverting a river and extracting footprints is incredibly expensive and as I have pointed out several times to, you know, when trying to make the argument for national funding, we have just secured nationally and internationally important set of Maua footprints funded by the right pairs of Dunedin and our local community. So I think that's another example of where we can make a strong case that there is evidence that museums like ours should be able to access national funding pots, even if it's retrospectively, because I'm telling you that was quite an expensive piece of work that we had to do. And we had to do it because those footprints are absolute treasure that we need to make sure are preserved and conserved for future generations. Councillor Newell?
Sorry, just further to that, when can we see them and also, and also are we having a look round that area for more or for more and more?
The answer, I'm very, very keen to get the footprints on display, there's a huge amount of interest. Because they are so precious and they are in a clay material, we've got to dry it out and that will take time and because nobody's ever really done this before, our conservation team are erring on the side of caution, which is what you want from your conservation team, which is they're saying, look, we know you want them on display, but we don't want them to be damaged anyway. Ideally, we'd like to fund a display that you can come into the museum and see them drying out, but that's going to be more expensive. So we're putting together a plan, but I'm putting pressure on the team that as soon as it is safe can we have them on display, but I think it's more likely to be months than weeks, given the complexity of this. But there are sort of six amazing beautiful footprints sitting in our conservation lab at the moment and they're just, it's just the best thing we've had, so it's really exciting. Councillor Benson?
Is it possible to just get 3D prints made of them?
Yep.
And perhaps put them in the entrance way of the, in the spacing that they were so that people get an idea of what a Maua actually does?
Yeah, and that is actually the plan. We did a whole bunch of science on the day, I obviously managed to drop all my meetings to go and see it, but we had a drone from the university geology department that 3D scanned it from above, so we've actually got a scan of the footprints in Sichuan and the plan is, I think, that when we have them on display, they will be displayed in the original, they'll be, it's like a jigsaw that you put back together, but it will be a while before we do that and we very much would like to have that in the entrance if we can because it's such an iconic discovery. I think this is really important stuff, but we're very determined to do this right because as I say, you know, the project was driven by a young curator called Kane Fleury, who is about, I think he's 27, 28 years old. This is the most exciting science project he's probably going to get his life and he wants to do it right and this is going to build his reputation. So he's being driven to make sure that we get as much science out of this before we put them on display and we can age them, I mean, sorry, I'll shut up, but the footprints are in a strata that's somewhere between 1 million and 12 million years old and to get the exact date, they're going to use pollen inside the clay to be able to date it. So all of that work's got to be done and we want to make sure that we get as much science out of these things as possible before we do put them on display. But absolutely, we want to, we want to have that iconic path on display in the museum somewhere and maybe eventually as part of a Maua gallery, who knows, because that would be great.
And you could do 3D prints of the original so that it didn't matter if people walked on them or whatever?
That's right. Well, there's even talk about, and again, there might be some ethical stuff around this, but doing 3D prints that you could sell in the shop. But I don't think we'd do that because I don't think it'd be appropriate, but certainly we can get really good 3D prints out of this and we'll do cars and things.
Thank you.
I was going to say, surely we've exhausted questions of the report or started questions on the report. Councillor Law and then councillor Alder?
My question was just here, how narrow can you bring the span between 1 and 12 million years into?
At the moment, that's the band because we know that that clay formation, and forgive me, I'm not a geologist, but-
Yeah, 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 I understand that, but what I mean, when you say you narrow it down and measure the pollen, how accurate do you think you'll get it then?
Within a few, probably a few, certainly a few thousand years, if not a few hundred years. So it would be really, and these are the oldest prints ever discovered, we think, so it's quite exciting.
Very good. Same age as councillor Benson.
Councillor Alder?
Sorry Chair, I just have one more Maua question and that is, how big is it? Like, how big is the print?
Oh, the footprints are about 300, each footprint's about 300mm, so about 12 inches in old money.
So it's bigger than your hand?
Yep. And it's really interesting because lots of people said, how come they're so close together? But my understanding is because the Maua thigh bone is quite long or short, it could only walk like that, it's like a chicken. So that's why they're all so close together. It's just amazing, piece of, I mean, actually standing there and seeing this thing uncovered was just incredible. Let's go. No further questions. Would someone like to move the report being noted? Move councillor Alder? Seconded councillor O'Malley? Would you like to speak to your motion?
I just want to thank Ian for his Maua talk today. We're all very keen to see the actual prints, but we can wait.
Further discussion, I just wanted to mention, and I've spared everyone trying to frame it as a question, but apropos of the discussion around national funding for regionally significant collections or nationally significant collections in the regions, there is a remit going, being brought by the Whanganui District Council in support of nominally the Sargent Gallery, but going to the local government, New Zealand AGM, with the support of four other local authorities, asking specifically for national support for nationally significant collections that are housed within the regions. So that is something that will be discussed at a national level and is an unhelpful to your ongoing crusade for, quite rightly, for central government support for the collections that we hold here on behalf of the country, really.
Absolutely agree.
Nothing further, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, that's agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, community and culture non-financial activity report for the quarter ended 31 May 2019. Mr Dixon, Ms Gunn, has been called. Or not?
Captain.
Take it as written?
That's right. Ask some questions?
Any questions? Councillor Gary?
Thank you and I just wanted to ask a question about the aspiring leaders, it's page 49, item 34, and it was around the three young people being selected to go to the aspiring leaders forum and just wanted to know if you could articulate the growth and the popularity of that particular opportunity, the interest this year?
That would be me. So the last couple of years, we've had a small number of young people apply to go to aspiring leaders forum and as the council laws may remember, those young people who do attend come back and speak to council each year. This year we had, so normally we have about 10, this year we had 25 young people actually apply to go. A bit of a conundrum for both staff and the councillor and the Otago Community Trust representative who had to select down to interview 10 young people and then originally it was going to be two young people who went, but three young people had been supported to go. So I could say that we did a much better job promoting it. I don't know if that's entirely true, but let's go with that. So hopefully we do as good a job next year and that becomes something that young people really want to take up an opportunity to go to each year.
Thank you and I think it was the promotion and very high calibre of young people involved. Thank you. I had another question which was on page 50 and it was item 48, art and creativity and infrastructure and that's great to see the work being done at Taurani. I know I keep asking about this, Mr Dixon, and I know that the Peninsula Connection project started before that policy came into being, but do we have any thoughts around that, for that project?
We certainly have a member of the team who's engaging with the project manager for the Peninsula Connection. We are exploring opportunities and there will, I think there is likely to be some relatively light touch interventions that can be delivered. They're really at a very initial stage of discussion, but that, I can tell you that that dialogue is constructive and ongoing and I would expect to see some impact in the next few months.
Thank you, that's reassuring.
Councillor Benson?
Thank you, Mr Tumman. It's about the same paragraph actually, the reference to art and creativity and infrastructure, but on a different matter. What is your attitude to the maintenance of murals that happen to exist on city council property? Do you have a view, are they looked after or is that the responsibility of the originator?
Well, there is a trust that oversees the origination of those murals and I think your question provokes us to consider that. I think that hasn't been entirely worked out and so I can certainly undertake to take away that question and to respond to you.
Well, if I may elaborate, I mean, I'm raising it because the matter surfaced at a Keep Dunedin beautiful meeting that a number of us are represented on this week and clearly the mixed bag of sources for murals in public, but a lot of them nonetheless are on our property one way or another and it would seem to me that that conversation needs to be had about where the line is drawn, about whose responsibility they are. So that is going to happen, you're telling me, that conversation?
I think there's a useful conversation to be had with the property team and I will undertake to have that in short order. Thank you very much.
Can I just be clear councillor, that the scope of your question is buildings that are owned by the city as opposed to any building in the city that happens to have a mural on it? Yeah, good, thank you. Councillor Lawfesel?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you to the team for your ongoing mahi and I just wanted to ask if you were concerned about the decreases in satisfaction with the resident surveys from various institutions? I mean, they're only small, but do you have any, like, in the surveys, do you ask why they're dissatisfied or is it seasonal or?
With respect to the cultural institutions, I think it's a function of the programming that's happening at that particular time. So with respect to Toito, we're doing a lot of work on the behind the scenes. That has meant that we've temporarily diverted resources away from temporary exhibition programme and public programme, that those resources will be redirected back. I think there's, we're also in a very fluid space in terms of both public perceptions and also the way that tourists engage with us. So there will always be fluctuation. I take satisfaction in the fact that whilst there may be a slight downtick at the moment, those are very high taken nationally and, but as I said, certainly with respect to Toito and with Launjuan, that is more about the focus this year on back of house and I anticipate that redirecting that focus will have a positive impact in due course.
Councillor Alder?
Thank you Chair. Now, my question was just around place-based support, which seems to be working really well, and coming to the annual plan and public forum, there was an expression of, is there a process or a way for place-based to be able to be represented in a more formal way or anything like that? Their concerns or? A bit like community boards or something like that?
The staff were a bit unclear of the question, you might want to rephrase it?
Well, because community boards sort of have reports and meetings and actions from those and whereas place-based groups don't have a process-
I think the question is, what would a mechanism look like?
On how we can support as a city, place-based community development in the long term, that is being undertaken by a member of the community development team who is discussing that internally and externally and we plan to bring that paper to council later this year and it may be within that that we can, we will provide some options, you know, some options in terms of ideas around how the council can support, but also potentially better recognise, I guess, which is I think what you're asking, the thoughts and views of place-based communities. I know that our team takes the feedback that we get from them and actions as much as we're able, but in terms, and it is part of our role and needs to be and that's something I will double check with our team, that we are also encouraging people to come to these meetings and other public forums to make sure that they give voice to their own views as well. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Wylie?
Question regarding visitors' numbers and around Toito, Chinese Gardens and Alveston. And I see TripAdvisor, the rankings and the ratings are quite high, so we're doing quite well with the tourism sector. I'm interested to know why we didn't, why these entities didn't attend trends?
I think it was a function of the fact that it was far away and the expense within the marketing budget wasn't deemed at institutional level to be justifiable expenditure.
Okay, so then I look at the OTT on the 15th of May, an article about the disappointment of, from Enterprise Dunedin around a comment made that there was only five entities from Dunedin travelled and were part of the Dunedin booth, plus one travelled on their own. And I would have thought these entities would have been front and centre in supporting the Dunedin visitor strategy and Dunedin visitor economy.
I think there is scope for us to be working harder at making sure that the breadth of Dunedin, DCC and Dunedin facilities are represented collectively more effectively and we can certainly put some work into that next year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Further questions? No? Someone like to move the report being noted? Move councillor Newell? Seconded councillor Gary? Would you like to speak to it? Councillor Newell? No? Other speakers? Councillor Alder?
Well, it's just a privilege to be able to see that the art gallery won an award and was in for another award this year and also the museum, so it demonstrates that the staff and the management are working really, really hard and getting really good results, so a big congratulations.
So a big congratulations to our community facilities and those places.
I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against, that's agreed? Thank you. Item seven, items for consideration by the chair. Are there any issues people want to raise at this point? No? In that case, I'll declare the meeting closed and we'll be back momentarily with the two minutes, to say optimistically, of the Planning and Environment Committee. Thank you.